Shorter term items that are not necessarily yet. We did some bands and then once the projects are fully underway, we were gonna convert, we'll convert them over to bonds later.
So there could be a grant component with some of the school projects too, so you don't wanna really go in head full steam with bonds and then all of a sudden the grants come in.
Once it's bonded, it's bonded.
Yeah, so it gives you a little bit more flexibility and then we can keep that bond number kind of around.
So I I'm not even like, so you went through the list with the.
Yeah. And okay. And I know you were involved, yeah, so yeah.
Yep.
And then on this package right here that's in front of you, this has just market data. I mean, the first page is is more discreet for me to.
So we, this, this net we have technically with everybody.
Yeah, I don't wanna, yeah, I don't wanna start.
I just, I just wanna, but we're recording.
Yep.
And we're at now at ten fifty seven, so we probably should, um, we should probably call the meeting. And uh, you have an agenda right in front of you and there's only three items on here.
Okay.
Uh, but you should officially call it to order.
Hey Christine, if you can hear, you're on mute, okay?
I did, I heard you.
Okay.
We're recording somewhere.
Okay, um, yeah, so, um, welcome to the special meeting of the bond committee of the Board of Selectmen. Thursday, June twentieth, twenty twenty four. Will you say the pledge?
I think we do.
Okay, let's all stand and say the pledge of allegiance.
Yep.
Uh, let's go, will you lead us to the pledge allegiance? Alright, okay, um. Called the meeting to order, uh, item number two to consider an act on bids received for the sale of thirty three million eight hundred ninety thousand dollars general obligation bonds and eight million eight hundred sixty thousand dollars general obligation bond anticipation notes, maybe motions.
Well, we can't accept anything yet.
Right, so.
Is that the motion to accept the bid or is that the motion to?
This is a motion to.
Oh, yeah.
To consider.
This is consideration.
An act on, so, um.
Yeah.
Uh, Christine, okay, second, um, it's separate here, um, so, um. There we go, I guess.
Before we get started, cause I know everybody hasn't gone through this yet, what we we normally do, David, is we keep minutes of this meeting, I already drafted them. Based on how these meetings normally go, I have you calling the meeting to order, cause that's usually what happens and David signs it. What I'll do, because it didn't start at eleven fifteen to ten fifty eight, I make the changes in handwriting.
Perfect.
And then you sign off when when the bid is uh accepted. And then when we go back to the office, I make it all pretty and then we sign, we sign it next week, but we like to leave with this signed.
Okay.
And so I keep the minutes for you.
You're doing the minutes for this one versus normal.
Yes, exactly, okay?
Okay, so you guys have the floor.
Alright, thank you very much, uh, we're here today obviously for the bond and note sale. Um, Matt Sperdell, Phoenix advisor, the town's municipal advisor, my colleague Riley Green. Um, I think the table's full, I know Caitlin's coming down, um, shortly, but uh, really the purpose of today is all the work that we've done and this is, you know, our first time through with everyone at this table really, so, um, at least it gives me something to talk about. I don't have to, you know, I can actually talk about our process rather than, um, which is nice in a way, so, um. All the work that we've done with the official statement document, you know, that, I don't know, eighty page document that ends up being two hundred pages that gets sent out and worked on for the last two months has been distributed to any bidder or investor imaginable. Um, it's been put into Bloomberg, the bond buyer, so, you know, from a perspective of advertising the sale, all that's been done. The OS went out a week ago, um, which is like the the normal amount of time, uh, for those to hit the street. And in that document is obviously all the information that was, you know, provided by the town and and with financial information, debt, et cetera, et cetera. Um, it also has a notice of sale, which is this document right here, which really is very important in that it it kind of, uh, it it lays out all the rules and parameters for the bid today. So there's a notice of sale for the bonds, we've noticed sale for the notes. And it just lays down all the important things for the, you know, for the underwriters and potential bidders in terms of the bidding, you know, the platform, the call date, the structure, all those types of things. And that brings us, well, i- in addition to the rating calls, obviously that was a major part of the process with Moody's and S and P, which we were able obviously to maintain the triple on rating and the highest note rating that they give, which Moody's case is called Mig One. And in S and P's case is called SP one plus, which is, you know, standard and porous plus and, you know, and Moody's investment grade one. So we have the highest ratings on both and obviously also good size in that the bonds are over thirty three million, the notes are close to nine. So we should attract about as as many bids as you can attract, um, you know, in this current environment. I mean, in some environments, there's more bids than others, et cetera, et cetera, but everything else being equal with size, structure, credit rating, et cetera. This will attract really about as much interest as we possibly could. So now that that's all out there and the underwriters have been contacted and everybody has what they need. They are instructed today to submit their bid on the on the bonds and notes. So, and really this is, while it's the most important part of the process, in some ways it's the easiest, just from the perspective that they submit a bid and we accept a little bit. There's nothing we need to talk about, you know, other than the fact that, you know, X Y Z firm put a bid in that's has the lowest true interest cost. Um, which means it's the, obviously the best deal for the town and we accept that bit. And then we start the process of, um, closing, which happens in, you know, a week and a half, two weeks, so.
Accept the lowest bid for each, are you sure?
For, no, for the whole deal, it's all or none, yeah, so it's all or none. It's all or none on the bonds, I I will just say officially, well, actually the notes are all or none as well. There are some circumstances where you could chop the notes into pieces, like if it was a hundred million dollar note, we'd probably allow for that to be done. At an eight million dollar, there no one's gonna bid on it, would bid on anything less, it's it's not that big. So, um, it's an all or none and the true interest cost accounts for every coupon, cause all these, the twenty coupons will have fives and four percent coupons. And I can almost guarantee that they'll all be, that they'll start with fives, they'll go down to fours. And then they all structure it with different yields based on how they can sell those bonds in the market. We'll be more aggressive than others, um, you know, some might have, uh, more clients to sell them to, so they could, uh, lower the rates. And then the underwriter takes a piece for themselves for the risk of doing so, you know, the cost of doing the transaction, which is called the underwriter's discount. That's what it's called. And it is based on a per bond, um, fee, so they going into the bid, where they throw their structure of coupons and yields. They say, okay, based on these coupons and yields, you know, we're selling thirty, let's just say thirty four for round numbers, thirty four million. But based on these coupons yields, we can sell this in the market for thirty five million, because they're mostly gonna be premium bonds. They say, well, well, we wanna make, you know, five dollars a bond. What's what's that mean? Well, at thirty four million dollars, there's thirty four thousand bonds. If you're making five dollars a bond, it's about a hundred and seventy thousand. So that's what they keep, so they don't, it's not like you cut them a check or anything like that. Instead of getting that full million of premium, you'd get eight hundred and thirty thousand premiums. And that's, you know, and then that is all worked into the number and you'll get a true interest cost of, you know, three sixty five or whatever it is. So that's just kinda like what we're looking at at this point. This package here, the 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 page, this page I built, I know, so you're looking at here, this was the the results from last year. So the last year bond, we got, you know, ten bids, thirty one at a three thirty one, that's true interest cost column right here, third from the left. This platform, which is called Muni Auction, the Grant Street, allow, so it's, first of all, it's all electronic, so there's no call in bids or anything like that. It allows for feedback to the bidder, so that it gives them their rank. Here comes John, I mean, I'll start over, I'm sorry, I'll start over.
He's never been through this before.
Anything you're saying.
This is the first one.
Hello, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Hi, John Steph, Jess, Dan.
How are you, John?
Uh, you know.
Christine, how are you?
David's our treasure.
Hi, John, nice to see you.
Nice to see you too. Giving them a little bit of a feel for what's to be expected today, but primarily just from a procedural kinda how it works, platform and so on. And we're just looking at bids from last year. So just, I wanna jump up up into the bid platform screen in a moment, because the bidding is open right now from eleven to eleven fifteen. And and I should preface this now, so that when I get onto the screen, kind of who knows what's going on. Bids are due at eleven fifteen. There is, one of the the nice features of this platform is that it allows for the extension of the time. If, it's almost an auction format, it it's kind of an auction format, where they don't know what the winning, the the leading bid is, but they know that they're in third place. But they know that they're in second, they know that they're in the lead. So it does provide for some excitement and the hope is.
A horse race.
It's like a horse race, kind of, right, exactly.
So they can re- though.
They can, they can fine tune their bid and then they can, you know, it, the hope is that they get to a point where, uh, you know, they're close, maybe they're in second place, but they they really wanna these bonds, because maybe there's not other inventory in the market and they're willing to go lower than maybe that what they what they would have otherwise.
Do they know, they know, they don't know who the number one bidder is, but do they know the bid?
They know their rank, period.
They just know I'm number, I'm number three, which means two people have bid.
Exactly.
And and with a fit number, that that means that that's the number of times that that came from.
That's how many times they improved their bids, with one, you can only improve.
Yeah. So fidelity was was at the lowest bid at the lowest.
Yeah, and there's nothing to to say, well, if the winning bid doesn't improve their bid, is that, is that bad, is that good? It just means that they put their best bid in at first and then they walked away and they're dealing with those.
A bunch of people tried a few more times.
And then some try and say, and we're almost there, yeah, exactly, so, so with that provision. It's in the last two minutes, it's called the like the two minute rule or something, in the last two minutes, if the winning bidder is overtaken. At that point, there's another two minutes added, so that could feasibly go on, really.
Happened, that's all.
Anyway, forever, um, it has gone, uh, there's been times over the years where it's gone on for, you know, another fifteen minutes.
Yes, yeah.
We got bumped into the note sailor, which is rare, I I, you know, it was exciting. It is extremely rare.
Rare, but.
Yeah, these guys are like, they're gonna, most of them sharpen their pencil, they put the bid in, they walk away, maybe a couple of them might wanna sit around and try to be more aggressive, but, you know, they have other things to do, um, rather than just go around with this, but.
Are these Sperdell rules or are these, uh, are these sort of common?
No, no, these are all common, this is very common practice, this is, uh, the platform that we, Fairfield has used for forever and.
And it's all rules, but every, every town would use it.
Yeah, a lot of, so there's a couple of different platforms.
Okay.
Fairfield we've used this to great success over the years, so we keep with this.
Okay.
And, uh, it's, you know, it's a, it's a, it's a well-known credit, it's larger sizes, so we can attract a little bit more, you know, interest from the bidding respect. And it has worked well, so. With that being said, I don't wanna talk too much, I can continue to talk, but I wanna get onto the screen with the actual bids. And then we can sort of see what's going on, I'm gonna share my screen.
The bits we see are net of the underwriting costs.
Right.
The underwriting fee just is, it's production that doesn't come to you, they keep their own and then they give you the rest, which is called premium. That's what we call it, right? Alright, so I'm gonna share the screen, so Christine, can you see the screen I've shared here?
I can.
Okay, perfect, um, so you can see it, it's up on the right, it's just, you might have to crane your neck around a little bit there, Bill, but, um, so this is the. No, zoom it in here. You have your glasses, so I don't have to zoom it too much today. So thi- this is the, this is the screen for the the bond issue, uh, bidding, and you can see the time is eleven, it says, you know, between eleven and eleven fifteen. We're gonna enter the live auction now. I have a password here. Okay, so we've already gotten some action here.
We, we see this, but they don't.
They cannot see this.
Right.
They, yeah, they just see for seven or thirds. I'd like to recognize Caitlin Bossy.
Even for the fun stuff, right, the last five minutes.
Yeah, she got to miss my whole spiel, I I can start again.
I hear it every year, alright, yeah, same thing.
This one was even better, because it was a new, a couple, you know, people haven't been through it, so we got to really get into the depths of what's going on behind the scenes here. But see, as you can see, whenever a bid comes in, they highlight it, um, and and you can see here that, uh, let me just move this block of my, so Roosevelt Cross right now came in. Oh, wow, okay, so when we were, we were talking beforehand, we we actually loosely threw out like something in the, hopefully like three sixty, three fifty if we're lucky. Um, right now, we're already sitting at a three fif- uh, three thirty seven, so.
Great.
And and that wasn't, you know, sandbagging or anything, the market is, the market's been a little volatile of rate, of late and rates had drifted up in the last, they drifted for like a month and a half, but in the last couple of weeks, we've had some very good turnaround in the other direction, the the tax exempts, treasuries as well, like.
General.
Yeah, the ten year treasury was at, was at four seventy a cou- like a month and a half ago, it's at four twenty eight or something today. So, um, and which is the lowest level since like mid-March, so timing wise, sometimes it just kinda works out, um, that way and, you know. It doesn't always work in that exact relationship, but the fact that we're already under three four, and that's not to say that we're gonna go any lower. I mean, this is a very strong bid, it's better than what I I thought we were gonna be at today. Wells Fargo is making a charge, so they've improved their bid five times, you know, suspended five bids and, uh.
You're in the last three minutes of the.
So right now, yeah.
Is that, is that common for many of them to jump in?
It's, it's even, it's even somewhat common for someone to jump in like at the exact end or even after the thing's been extended. Like even if it's, if it's, let's say if it's gonna get extended and it goes out to eleven fifteen and thirty four seconds and they jump in even at that point. So some will, you know, try to, you know, eBay it a little bit and come in at the very end.
Yep.
Um, but again.
Started with three, we'll just screen it out when it's seven.
Yeah, that's what me, that's what I, yeah, no.
There's no hard feeling.
So we got a question.
Um, have you seen anyone ever withdraw a bid at the last minute?
Uh, on this platform, on this platform, Muni Auction, they can't. There's, there's another platform that they can and it barely just, cause there's another platform that's called Parity, which is also very well used, uh, you know, throughout the country for for electronic bidding. Uh, no, on this one they can't, so there's a little bit, some of the rules are a little different. So now JP Morgan just came in.
JP just came in and JP just came in ahead of him, so.
Right, oh, wow, this one's not, that's not, that's, that's gotta win, I mean, that's a three thirty three. We like, we like to truncate when it's like, three thirty three, we'll go to nine.
Gross interest, so the, must be the same coupons and they're just fighting.
Oh, damn, look at that, so remember I mentioned there'd be five percent, it'd be fives and fours?
Yeah.
Like, I say that, like, that's what it's gonna be, like, whether one is a, someone puts a three fifty somewhere or someone puts a four fifty some, but to to Riley's very astute point. See, this gross interest is based on the coupons alone.
Yep.
It doesn't have anything with premium or the yield, that's just straight, so if you see here, all these numbers are the same. Which means they haul, all these top four bids right now have the same exact coupon structure. Which is, and which is kinda rare, like that, usually it's not that to the point where you have the top four, so the only difference in their bid is what they're taking as an underwriter's discount, in other words, what they're willing to take, you know, will I do it for five dollars or maybe I'm willing to do it for three dollars a bond? But this firm wants seven dollars a bond and and and, you know, the, obviously the the, uh, the yields as well, so it's, it's very rare.
But with that coupon structure.
Uh-oh, wow, Mezaro, that is extremely surprising.
So there's two point four million.
Raymond James, it's very exciting, right?
So with two point four million a premium, that, this is crazy, you'll actually be raising thirty six, not thirty three.
Yeah, that's actually, so what happens with that?
You'll be raising thirty six million, not thirty three.
Right, the way, the way it works is these bonds all self at premium, so.
There's, there's men, yeah, Raymond James and then, it was two of them.
Well, 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 let's, let's circle back to that, let's circle back, do we, is it over?
No, it's, it's extended.
Oh, yeah, okay, okay, oh, yeah, there it is, there it is.
Cause when they jumped, the two of them jumped on JP right at the last second.
So we had an extra, you know, minute.
On each other, basically, almost.
We have about a minute twenty. Have to shrink the screen down so we can get onto the bids.
Move onto the platform.
It's, uh, Grant Street Group, oh, Raymond James now. Oh, three, 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 three.
He just got extended.
Now he's getting extended.
He had Ja- right, Jamie JP, then. Mezaro, and Mes, same time, Raymond and Mezaro.
Let's pull this down.
Every time they get extended, they're still in the.
Oh, look at, oh, I I'm sorry, I didn't have enough screen up, there's fifteen bidders on the board, so as I mentioned. This environment, this market, this type of deal is gonna get as many bids, fifteen bids is like obscene amount, just so you know, like, this is your first time through.
Only count the best bid.
This is the like high watermark of 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 bids. And it's because, of course, we all like to think it's been fair, but it feels so great and I love it, and it is, although.
But in this environment, this is what they're.
We, we use it against us.
And there's, um, a lot, so like, uh, just.
Maybe that's weird, I'm.
That goes into the depth.
Every deal and.
Otherwise it would be.
We think a third, a third, a third, and we redo that.
I think that's two things wrong.
Cause I think it's.
Not a ton of supply, still a ton of demand, you get a deal like this that comes and it.
You couldn't do this at all, and I I picked up, use it within six is like, if you wanted to hire them.
Not the case, it's always been.
So you go back to COVID.
Yeah, or.
I have an order.
And we're also gonna get, um.
Just looking for adjustments.
Most of my career, this is all.
That'll be next year.
Not a town like Fairfield.
No, no, but, but, but sometimes there's, sometimes that cloud's got a little darker.
That's good, extend it again.
Cause that's another.
Being auctioned right now as well.
The note goes off at eleven, then it's gonna eleven forty five, it's not gonna be nearly as exciting as it's so.
Yeah, the notes are boring, got it, so what is.
Still have, we have seventeen bidders on the board, that's insane.
It's been so long.
I'm submitting, wow.
I know, so, so that is, that's what I'm saying.
Got extended.
The, the bid last year was a three thirty one, the, the ten year treasure, the the ten year MMD is.
That's a lot.
Twenty five.
Seventy nine, roughly twenty five.
Gonna be your funnest meeting of the year.
It is, this is like, this is good stuff.
It's gonna be Kentucky Derby.
I've been doing this twenty five years and I even still get excited about it, this is, this is.
When you said it was rare, then it's like, do what they were doing, they, all of a sudden they start doing it, right, back and forth, jumping in first.
Yep, yep.
Look at FN, F H N has changed their bid ten times. Wells Fargo's changed it eleven.
Yep.
Wow.
Yeah.
It's gonna sound eleven times in the ninth.
Once in a minute, uh. And but it, it's a point zero zero, I mean, it, Raymond James just has to do a little tweak.
In the dollar amount, it's yes.
Look at, so if you look at the, it's a six thousand dollar difference, I mean, they're still making a bunch of money on this, but the the insane part is.
And there you go.
Oh my god!
From the back of the pack?
Yeah, seriously. But just to give perspective on the rate right now, the rate last year was a three thirty one. The ten year, so, and I'll just point to this one little page here, okay? So this is the yield curve, for anyone who can see it, sorry Christine, I don't have it on the screen right now, but the current curve is this red dotted line, this is page twelve. So. Yeah, and, no, so the current curve isn't red, the, yeah, one year ago is in green, which is exactly when the sale, it was a year ago. And if you look at the, the spread, the difference in the curves, I mean, it's significant, in the first ten years, you know, it's at least ten to fifteen basis point higher now. And as we go out into the, you know, twenty is really like, this, this goes out thirty, but if you look at the twenty, those last few years are another ten or fifteen basis points higher than they were a year ago, and we're almost at the exact same rate.
The spreads have come in.
I think spreads have tightened, is exactly right, cause the demand and and rates of, are coming down as opposed to going up and, you know, everyone's, you know, super condensed, there's not a lot of supply, there's a lot of reasons, because there's no way that this should be virtually the same rate as it was last year, that's, that's insane.
We're winning by seven thousand dollars.
We are, so we're twenty eight seconds away unless somebody wants to, Raymond James is still in the race.
They're trying, but.
Actually, we had ten bidders, which is still an outstanding number, this year we have seventeen and they've had seventy five adjustments, or thirty five total, but.
Like we're gonna close though unless.
We got eight seconds, and he's still trying down there.
Yeah, they try.
Well, Raymond just made another one, but they're not there yet, four thousand dollars.
Four thousand. Thirty five.
Four hundred dollars.
Yes, I think it takes seven.
Was it, uh, three thirty two?
Yeah.
Three. Wow.
That's way lower than that.
It's like three, three.
Yeah, so that's gonna be lower than the notes, just for the record, like, we were expecting them to be close, the notes probably should be around a three sixty, um. This is just an outstanding bid.
Which in this environment, it's higher on the notes, but the notes used to be.
Well, under normal circumstance, they should always be.
But this whole thing is, yeah.
Well, like even in this environment here, like, well, this was five years ago, cause we've been in a funky market for a little while, but, yeah, your note should be down here and the bond is a, all these.
Yeah, I always remember it's almost like, all one step away from free bonding, right?
Yeah, well, and la- last year was, we were kind of in the same boat, we were already in this environment, obviously, so it was like a three sixty last year for notes, it was a three thirty for bonds. So we'll go back to a normal environment someday, hopefully. Um, so now we'll hit, continue on the screen, uh, we do need to make it official, in the meantime, just while, you can see Riley's clicking away. He's looking at their bid and verifying that it's correct. Okay, because, you know, there's always a possibility that some software screwed up or malfunctioned or glitched. So we always verify with our software, um, just to confirm. Now it's, so that's like really just sort of a matter of, uh, procedure. The, from this point now, we'll, we'll, we have to make it official in here, you know, with bond council blessing to tell you what you're supposed to do. And then we contact them and say, you've been officially awarded and we start that whole process and stuff like that, but in the meantime, are we gonna verify first?
When do we get their coupons yields?
We're, we're gonna, when I, I could go like this, let's see here, click on the results. I mean, it, the bottom line is it's lowest T I C, oh, now I just, I'll just go back in, um. Lowest T I C is the, is the firm that gets awarded, and like I said, let me see, here. Roosevelt Cross.
Trying to find that.
Yeah, go down best bid down here. So here, we don't get the yields on this platform right away, but we do get the coupons, which again, coupons and premium are what impacts the true interest cost, that's all you need. You can see, so five percent here. Goes down to fours, like I mentioned, so, and and this is just what the market is right now. When we were in twenty twenty, twenty twenty one, rates were super low, I mean, we saw some coupons coming in at two. People are buying two percent coupons that go out twenty years, it's like, I don't know who those buyers are, but you know, whatever. And I think I saw one, a one, one time, like on a, you know, fifteen year somewhere, now it's all fives and fours, that's just, we're in an environment, rates are higher, obviously, there's some volatility, so they put the higher coupons on there, they'll give you some more premium to, you know, make the bid more attractive, but then at least, you know, the buy, this is all driven by what the buyers want. So like Roosevelt Cross isn't buying this, they're underwriting this to sell to fidelity, Vanguard, you know, X Y Z Bank, uh, private wealth, uh, you know, insurance companies, et cetera. And they demand, they want the higher coupon. So when they put that request in, hey, we want this coupon, then they, it's up for them to say, okay, well, it's a four percent coupon, you know, we're gonna give you a three, a three, a three twenty yield, how's that working? Say, oh, we want a three twenty five, and I will give you a three twenty two, you know, there is all that kinda negotiation that goes on. And then at the end, they have to say, okay, here's our book of business, here's what we feel like we need to make, like, how low are we willing to go on our underwriter's discount? To make this bid attractive enough to be able to fill those orders, cause they, you know, they do all this work and then if they put in a crap bid, they're not gonna win the thing and now they're gonna, these buyers are gonna go to the next firm to to do it. So there's a lot going on behind the, behind the scenes, but, uh. So, three, three, so it's three, three, two, eight, one, zero, seven. Live bid, for sure.
Slightly seen in a while.
Yeah.
Scroll up just a little bit.
Is this, like, posted, is the video posted?
Yeah.
Ever, I didn't know, I didn't know it was available in the old. Yeah, yeah, no, I.
I can all see the.
I don't think.
Uh, this, hmm. It's the one screen of us, they won't see, there's totally technology wise.
But you gotta, to be, to be logged in and see this, you have to be invited by this group right here, to see this right now, this'll get posted later enough, later.
No, I know, but the screen of the bidders won't be part of the, um.
No, because it's only doing this room.
Okay.
Very fun.
See the one in the green box right there? It's picking up that video and then what we say in this room. Is Christine seeing the, the, the shared screen? Cause she's logging on Zoom, she can see all.
Yeah, she has the password.
Yeah.
You need a password to see this.
I don't think that the shared screen.
Well, we could talk about all that good stuff in a minute, let's, let's make this official.
Okay.
So, John, Jess, in terms of the various.
It's a, a motion to accept the bid of Roosevelt Cross, somebody.
And the results in the lowest true interest cost of the town, and that's our recommendation.
Okay, motion to accept, uh, the Roosevelt Cross bid, uh, with the low, uh, with the lowest true interest cost to the town. I mean, um, three, um, three point three two eight, one oh seven percent, uh, for a total. uh for a total issue size of thirty three, uh, sorry, uh, thirty three million, eight hundred ninety thousand. May I have a motion? Uh, second, seconded, um, okay, uh, turn that, um, is there anything you need to say or if I said it all?
I I don't need to say anything. You're good.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, uh, motion approved.
Congratulations. Very good job. You did the right thing. Um, so we're, now we're gonna be in touch with Roosevelt to let them know they've officially won. Uh, make, let them know that there's, there hasn't been any resizing, you know, there there could, there's a lot of things that they'll ask, are the dates firm, blah blah, and they are, so nothing's changing. And then we'll get all the results out to the group, you know, bond council, the town, and uh proceed to closing, which, uh, is it the same closing bank wise?
Yes.
So that'll go to M and T on the day of closing and then you could.
I know, I had, I had it in my.
That.
TIC is uh three point three two eight one, right?
Do you have that all set up?
Yes, we're signing it two different days, I think. Jess, when are you signing?
So the plan is I'm meeting with you on Monday and I'm meeting with Brenda on Monday. And then John's gonna come back and meet with you and David and Christine, and I asked Betsy to meet you here to make it easier. She'll come with her seal on Tuesday at one o'clock.
Would it be easier if I came on Monday?
You're, you're welcome to. I'm I'm coming on Monday to meet with David here. What is it, eleven, David, or ten?
Ten to ten thirty.
Ten to ten thirty if you'd like. You have an option. It's up to you.
All right.
Either then or one on Tuesday. We'll be prepared, we'll be prepared to close. We've got a time for the seventh.
Said a little screw with the holiday in between.
We're making it all work.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Uh, so I'm gonna call Roosevelt Cross. Oh, Steve.
Which I don't think I've done. When is the note?
Right, everything right?
Oh yeah, I'll verify. It's starting, it's starting at eleven thirty. Don't worry, we'll be on.
They started without us.
Yeah, last night they.
This is the first, this is fun.
Don't get used to this stuff, cause this is eighty, whatever bids we got.
Yeah, it was like seventy two to five or something at the end.
And seventeen bidders is on.
Cause if you look at.
Hi, is this Steve? Hey Steve, Matt Spender from Phoenix Advisors, how you doing? Good man, I just wanna make sure you guys knew you've been awarded the Fairfield Bonds. No changes, no. And we'll send over everything. Who do you want it to be on there? I need your email, actually. You got Joe Daley's?
Yeah.
All right, we we, yeah, we'll send it over to Joe. Yep, okay. Good deal. Thanks, Steve. How's it going? That's how you do it.
Quick.
Yep. Yeah, it's kinda hectic on that.
Yeah, I think he's probably busy doing something that he's like, oh yeah, okay, good, whatever.
Does that do his next bid?
Yep. So now we'll go over to the notes. Note, notes, again, rates are a little bit higher. They're they're not getting the same amount of activity, you know, anywhere close to what we just saw here. But, you know, it's nine million-ish, triple A, so.
That's nice, no?
Yeah, it's good enough. We've done some, you know, million dollars, billion and a half, you get like one bid, two bids, but I mean, you need the money, so it's not like you have a lot of options. Now, if the one bid, it it is important to note, if the one bid did come in. And, you know, we're expecting a three fifty, let's say, and it came in at eight percent. Like, well, we're not gonna accept that. Like, we we we, we don't, yeah, we can, we do have the right, as per the notice of sale. Which is a very important fact to make, very exciting. Yeah, we can reject all bids. We can reject, you know, one or the other. We can reject all or we can accept.
If didn't the guys plan.
Right. Like if something, if, well, I mean, I hate to, you know, but like, you know, the Trade Center, you know, happened right now.
Something weird.
Or something crazy, then.
And they're bidding on coupon and.
Same thing, yeah, same thing. So you can see here, I mean, the difference, these two are the same bid. Now, this is a lot easier because it's one maturity. Obviously, it's a one year. So they're all, you know, if you look at this, the coupons are the same, then it's really just a difference in premium. So if the, if these guys were willing to to give you, you know, thirty one hundred or thirty two hundred dollars more in premium, they would slide in front of Piper, but it's a matter of, you know, how much are they planning on making? Are they gonna make ten thousand on this deal? And that's, you know, what they need to make and so on, cause it's, again, it's a lot. We have twenty maturities and a lot of different moving parts and obviously the leverage of of term, there's a lot more going on. This is a very straightforward issue. This we actually award based on net interest cost. True interest cost accounts for the present value. There's a present value calculation. Net interest doesn't. So it gets one year, there's no need for it, so it's a very simple calculation. And right now, we're already at three fifty seven, which is already, you know, fine with maybe a three bid. All good, yeah, yeah.
But they can't do anything with this until we actually sign, close.
Yeah, I mean, they have it like spoken for, they have it, they they have orders for it that are firm.
I'm there, man. I was gonna say, because they have to know, I mean, their challenge is just getting right back out to market the fees.
Oh, right, of course. So once, once we.
And things change on a dime, right?
Once, exactly, but they're locked in at this.
Yeah, they're in orders.
Yeah, at this point. Cause they have orders, but one thing that is interesting to note is they don't have orders for thirty three million. Like, they have orders for maybe twelve million or eleven. You know, maybe they put, you know, some in the front, some of them are also in the back just to get interest. And they, these guys know the market so well that they know that they can blow through it what they need to. If they're way over the top aggressive, you know, they might be sitting on some of these balances for a few days, and if the market moves, you know, that, you know, however much that they're making, planning on making, uh, when they put the bid in today, could evaporate very quickly.
That's what I was getting at. That's their challenge.
And that's, but that's all in the documents that they can't back out at that point and uh, you know, there would be a serious lawsuit if that ever were to.
They're selling this one issue.
Yeah, yeah.
They're on sale.
They're outside, yeah. Now that they've been officially awarded, now they're trying to work through the rest of the inventory, cause they don't, they're not in the business to hold.
For for settlement.
Settlement July fifth, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
The longer they hold it, the more that exposed they are. Now, rates could go the other direction, but that's, that's not the game they're trying to play. Yeah, exactly.
Now, they're doing it and filling orders as soon as they can and getting it off.
Yeah. Look here, I mean, that Piper Sandler came in at three sixty eight. Jeffrey's at three fifty seven. Like, I, there's almost no chance that they're gonna, either one of these guys is gonna chip away. Or someone else that comes in.
Surprised at that.
And they went a lot of deals.
Scroll down to the same potential bidder.
Uh, so you have Bank of New York, they're in, Jeffrey's in, Oppenheimer's not in yet. They'll probably wait till the end, and Piper's already in, so. And so, I mean, if we get four bids, that'd probably be the uh, the end of it.
Short term paper.
Yeah, short term, they can't, they don't make a lot of money on it. It's just like, it's like one phone call. And they just kinda like place it and, so like, like I said, the five dollars a bond thing, I I I'd have to, do we get, well, if you get the bond report, let me know. I could see like.
So where's going out, second?
Oh, yeah, yeah, I'll follow up. Let's say on the bonds, they made five bucks a bond, which is what I said, it's about a hundred and seventy thousand. These guys literally might make five thousand dollars on this deal. So they're not really trying to screw around too much. They want to either, you know, win it or lose it, move on, not sit here all day.
Yeah, it's less about making specific money on this, but.
Right.
In their pipeline, right?
And keep, yeah, keeping, they're moving through.
About their end emotion.
If they're working with Fidelity, you know, Fidelity's fund or Vanguard, they just wanna keep those guys happy and.
Yeah.
Yeah, fill some stuff. This is not gonna be nearly as exciting.
I guess you have to. Who've heard of Roosevelt Cross?
Percent. Yeah, they're, they're like a major municipal bond player, but that's, that's what they do.
Yeah.
That's their Roosevelt Cross.
I, you know, not having been in the, in this line, you know, I've never heard of before.
There's like one.
I'm looking about, yeah. Yeah, they're old, old, old.
Yeah, they have been around for like a hundred years or something.
Changed much.
And then some of the people had too. Like, I've known Dom and these guys, they were there for sixty years.
Well, Teddy's still on the board. No, but um, they're in West Hartford and I worked there.
But if, you know, when we were, when the market started going the other direction in January of twenty two, rates had been very, very low for twenty twenty one, and then January first, everyone woke up, it's like, oh, inflation's a problem. Rates went straight up pretty much all year. And under those circumstances, typically, you know, deals obviously dry up, refinancing's go away because there's not the opportunity to refinance all debt and save money. Some new money issues get pushed off a little bit because rates are higher. So the market typically shrinks by like, you know, thirty percent in one year, just overnight. What typically happens is you see firms getting out of it, closing their departments down, consolidating, you know, it's, we've seen it over and over again, you know, for the last, at least for me, since, you know, two thousand. And it just wasn't the case here. I mean, there was a couple firm, like Citigroup got out of, got out of it, which is crazy. Um, and and a couple other firms, but you've seen, I mean, to your point about the list of not knowing who these guys are. You know, now we see firms like Bancroft and Fifth Third, SWBC, Huntington, Wells, I mean, Wells Fargo, obviously, but KeyBank, Mezr, all these firms that just have like come in to where we're seeing more bids than ever, in a, in a market that, you know, rates are much higher and there's fewer deals going around, so. It it it's, rates stay elevated for another year. Maybe then you see a couple of these guys decide to cut the group or or consolidate down, but we'll take it, you know, this is a, greater, more competition, the better as far as, you know, we're all concerned, but, but this is really something. So this gross interest. Yeah. Well, I had mentioned, I mean.
They all bid the same coupon.
They all bid the same except this one.
Yeah.
All bid the same exact coupon structure. Sounds like difference is four thousand dollars a premium would have, Raymond James would have won, two thousand extra here, five there, to get to the next slot.
Five's for the probable bonds and that.
Yeah. Very astute. Exactly correct. Yeah, if you keep those high coupons, those fives on the callables, there's a, it kinda negatively impacts the math, cause the the bonds get priced to the call not to maturity, and the higher the coupon, the the worse that is, so they usually suppress those at least a little bit, and that's what they've been doing, fives to fours. But that's um, now the difference, of course, between this final bid is three forty, so this is fourteen basis points, three thirty two versus three forty six. Difference is like four hundred thousand dollars, you know what I'm saying? So it gets to a point where obviously it's, it's a big deal, but. So now I think there's something like.
Flood and Ruption study.
That, that.
Eight forty. I love making prompt comments in meetings, like the time I said, and I know we're being recorded. I made a joke about uh, during the budget, it's like, yeah, what about keeping or uh, being, you joke with the dogs for another month, like I got like five emails.
If they're making a mess, we get it. Yeah, it goes to like a public official. It's like nuances in their words, getting like.
There's no joking around, but.
Sad, someone's listening, someone's like.
Worth to piss off the dog people, though.
I'm a dog person, huge dog person. And uh. Yeah, it's an amazing thing, but you can't do it or you can't close later, cause they have to, really people leave their bags behind, so it, each needs to be prepped. They need at least, they need a few weeks.
Oh, so Oppenheimer did come in. They were a little bit longer for things to get cooking, and they're at three sixty eight. Everyone that is in line at the door has come in, if you will, these, so these are their little shorthands down here. So there's Bank of New York, Jeffries, Oppenheimer, Piper, so they're all here.
Five minutes left.
So they might, they might chip away, you know, maybe a little bit, but I, I would.
But they're pretty far off.
Yeah, I know, they're, yeah, we're pretty much at Jeffries. So we, but we do have to wait.
So you do buy a lot of short term.
Yeah, so eh, and back, back on this sheet here, in the earlier pages, there's like all the deals that have been managed for the last twelve months. So page six and seven, and you can just see, cause we're just talking about notes now, page seven is all the notes. Most recent being down the bottom line. It actually, it's been twelve months since we sold it. Just so happens that Fairfield is the top line. That's the deal from last year. You can see these most recent issues, kinda funny that.
Four in a row.
Were so tiny. Oh, yeah. It's al, it's almost, you can't really get a gauge on where the market actually is when you go out with a million dollar, and a lot of these are. You know, two thirds of the state, but, you know, they just had a small issue and need to go out there with some notes. So they got, you know, three ninety, four seventy, maybe, this is much, you know, obviously a bit more meat on the bone and you got a three seventy five, a three fifty seven, which is more indicative of where the market actually would be. But you can see the winners there, Oppenheimer, they're either right there, Jeffries, they're right there, and uh, TD's not on for whatever reason. And New York, I want a couple months back. There's far fewer banks in the market selling notes. And if you just look at the list, it's like Oppenheimer, Jeffries, TDs, and just Piper, and there's not a lot of other, if you look on the, on the bond on the previous page, I mean, it's, it's smaller font, but. A lot more for, as we saw, based on the seventeen group we got.
Did a little better on the, did a little better on the box than Westport did a month ago.
Yeah, and the rates are, rates are, the rates are.
Well, Janatelli did a little.
Rates are a little higher too. It's weird, that was, that one, interesting enough, when we got the bids on that Westport issue, we, we both looked at each other like, oh, that was a little higher than we, we just thought it would, it would, we just thought it was gonna be lower. You know, you don't wanna, you know, decline too much, because then they think, oh, gosh, it's a bad deal, cause you just never know what's gonna. No, I like that. I appreciate, I appreciate, but I remember that distinctly, like thinking, oh, man, I thought Westport would be a little bit lower than they were, but.
So would you start the game off with na, 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 boo boo?
His efforts to try to help it started. We're starting to see the effects.
Well, yeah, you could see, yeah, you could finally see the rates have kinda turned around.
Like it takes a little bit more, like they, you know what I mean? They started to try to move the needle and.
Yeah, and and really, in this market, all that comes, only thing that matters is the CPI. Like, when that CPI number comes out and it's a point oh one or whatever, higher or lower, the market goes bananas in, in one direction or the other. We, we were lucky enough here, cause this is the ten year treasure, is the ten year tax exempt, this red bar. We had a big run up, you know, and I guess it was towards the end of last year, like October, then we had a huge drop here, and then things started to drift again, you know, cause maybe inflation and all this kind of stuff. But then recently, we've gotten that little turnaround there with, which is really like an a fifty point basis point turnaround right up to the sale, which is just nice, because some of that inflation hasn't uh, as cooled. Now, there's not, there's what, maybe we get one Fed cut this year?
Maybe not any, the rate we're going on.
But everyone was saying it could be five or six, you know, definitely gonna be three, and now maybe one.
It's this uh, it's ending, right?
Yep.
Yeah.
All right, done.
Oh, and Piper just came in at the very end, just trying to sneak one in there.
They gotta make up too much ground.
Yeah, so now it's over. It it's uh, you know, refresh, like once uh, yeah. So we got a three, five, seven, nine, two.
Three, six?
I think that is what I said, John. Thank you for that. I appreciate that. You leave the shirt up a little bit, but then everyone's, you throw me a bone. I do appreciate that bone.
You are verified.
Alright, so we're verified, that's good.
So. Maybe it does not, it's just the bonds.
So anyway, so we're, yeah, that, it's, the end time is eleven forty five. Nobody able to overtake Jeffrey's bid at a three point five, seven, nine, two, one, nine. So that would be the, obviously, the recommendation would be to accept the Jeffrey's bid as it is the lowest net interest cost in the town, and we just need.
So we need a motion to that effect.
May I have a, um, you there, Christine?
I am.
May I have a motion to accept the Jeffrey's? May I have a motion to accept the Jeffrey's um bid for the um. Bond anticipation notes uh in the amount of principal eight million, eight hundred and sixty thousand. Um, coupon four point two five and net interest uh cost. Uh, three point five, seven, nine, two, one, nine.
So moved.
Second. Seconded, um, okay, um. All all in favor?
Aye.
unanimous, um, approved.
Alright, then, so I will, we have a, well, I'll get the number. I'll give them. Me and Kylie, I don't know what happens. Has a, I think he has connections ties with.
You guys are giving out nail files.
They're very popular. And I know there's a few people in.
Finance department.
Finance office. Last year, last year, they're very high quality.
One the other day.
I'll I'll let them.
Hey, Dan, it's Matt Spernle.
I'm not a nail file. More of a.
Hey, I wanted to really know if you look at the uh.
Direction codes. Yes, as you're looking at the whole time you're, the name, the whole time.
And we'll kind of fit in there. Yeah, it's actually, I mean, you're.
It's great.
Everything's good. That's actually a really.
Really.
Yeah. Alright, thanks, bud. Dan, appreciate it.
So I happen like, what the hell is this?
Right, yeah, that's actually rude. Our CEO has put our logo on all kinds of ridiculous things. And we thought that was one of them until the response we got from people like, oh, these are really good. And then people were like, wait, that's why we we just got it. Did he tell you? We just had, so New Jersey's where our main offices, that's where they keep all stuff. They sent us a shipment, like we're like, we need more, you know, pens and stuff. We have, we have like five hundred of the nail files now. Like that'll probably last me the rest of my career. Did we bring pens, Riley?
The pens are fabulous.
They're the best pens. I.
The best pens.
I do not disagree.
But are there uh what to, we want to adjourn and.
Yeah, we have to make a motion to adjourn.
We want on record about our words first.
We're all good.
Oh, good, Dan. We're good. We are great.
Yes.
Jess, we can adjourn. Okay, uh, motion to adjourn?
So moved. Send me a pen.
All in favor say. Oh, you wanna pen? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
unanimous, we are adjourned.
Alright.